Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Mayor and Commissioners for October the 28th, 2014. Would you rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you bow your heads with me for a brief prayer, please? Precious God, I come to you tonight on behalf of the Town of Rising Sun. I pray for the people of this town and for this board that we continue to move the town forward and that you will be with us in every decision that we make. I pray for the people of this town that may not have anyone, that they feel hope. I pray for our guardians of freedom that are overseas and in combat zones at this time. I pray for those people in West Africa that are dealing with the Ebola crisis and pray that you keep America safe during this time. In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you. First thing on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the last meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting from October the 14th, 2014?
I move we approve the minutes.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes, thank you. We have nothing for reporting of an executive meeting, so we'll move into public presentations. The first thing on our agenda is Mrs. Mary Ann Scully from Howard Bank. So, welcome.
Thank you very much. And first of all, let me thank you all for welcoming us and giving us an opportunity to talk to you a little bit about the bank and about the recent transaction and about how excited we are to be part of this community. I'm not going to speak for a very long time. I'm sure that the last thing that you want to hear at 7:00 o'clock at night is a banker speaking. I promise not to talk about the economy at all, but I do want to give you a little bit of background on the bank and give you some idea of what our plans are for the branches and the assets that we've acquired in your community and some of the contiguous communities. Probably none of you heard of Howard Bank prior to October 17th, and that's somewhat understandable. We are a young bank. The bank is only about 10 years old. We're headquartered in Elickit City, Maryland, which is in Howard County, and we have been committed throughout our short lifespan to bringing to the communities that we live in and work in a new brand of banking, which is to attempt to cover the best of the old and the new. So, we believe that we need to have convenient products and convenient services and all of the distribution channels that our colleagues at the large institutions do, but we believe that we can deliver those services with a more customized and a more flexible approach by embedding people directly in the communities in which we operate. Every company has a lot of stakeholders, people that they owe an allegiance to, and we're no different in that regard. But if you think about the people that are most concerned about the bank, they traditionally fall into four groups. We have our customers, we have our employees, we have the communities that we live and work in, and we have our shareholders. We believe that if you take care of the first three, that the fourth will be taken care of quite naturally. And we would say that right now, the people that we are most concerned about candidly are our employees, because we know that those are the people that you know as customers or prospective customers of the bank, and that if they're all right, you're going to feel a little bit better about the bank, and then we can provide you, the customers, with a better service. But we also mention, which not all banks do, communities as one of our stakeholders. And I think that all banks say this, many banks believe it, but few banks act out, as Howard Bank has done, the philosophy that you're really, as a bank, only as strong as the community in which you operate. So if you work to make the community healthy directly, not just indirectly, then that will ultimately make you more successful. And we have been known throughout our history for somebody that directly gives back to the community. We were named as the Maryland Small Business Philanthropist of the Year a number of years ago, not the Maryland Small Business Bank Philanthropist of the Year, but the Maryland Small Business Philanthropist of the Year. We're getting an award in a couple of weeks from the Community Foundation in Howard County as the Corporate Philanthropist of the Year there. We have a number of people that serve on local boards, whether they be not-for-profit boards. We were very excited Friday night to learn that Jennifer carries on the Howard Bank tradition this soon in the game by sitting on this commission. So, that's really what the bank is all about. And I know it's easy for banks to say that, and certainly easy for a bank that's just moved into a community to say that, but one of the things that I've reminded some of our new colleagues of recently is if you think about the fact that this bank just started 10 years ago. People don't start community banks out of some kind of legacy. They start a community bank because the people that started it believe that a community bank can do something that's very unique and very different. And we've been very fortunate. We've grown steadily since we started the bank 10 years ago. As of Friday evening, we were somewhere around $550 million in assets, so today we're somewhere around $700 million in assets. This is a very big move for us, and because it's a big move for us, I think that would give anybody that's skeptical about our sincerity, not just a philosophical reason to believe that we're sincere, but an economic reason to believe that we're sincere. This is a big deal for Howard Bank. It's a big deal in terms of assets, in terms of numbers of employees, in terms of locations. And we hope that what we'll be able to do is to build on the legacy that MBRS had in the community. We're frankly very honored to be associated now with a bank that has a 140-year-old legacy to add to our shorter 10-year-old legacy. And we've made a commitment to all of our employees and to our customers, and we make it tonight to the community, that we're going to do everything we can to honor that legacy, to acknowledge that this is a long-established bank, and to do what we can to uphold that legacy, to make people proud of the institution and its branches and its people, and to begin giving back to the community. Because we're a healthy bank, if we weren't a very healthy bank, we would not have been permitted by the regulators to undertake this transaction. You can be assured that it means that we have the ability to lend into the community, to lend to small businesses, to lend to individuals. We have a history of working in communities, not only in a traditional way with their businesses and their consumers, but in some non-traditional ways. We've put together what we used to call Renaissance Loan Funds to work directly on economic revitalization projects, to encourage people not just to do new development, but to look at older areas in a community and revitalize them. We have done a lot with individuals to help them become first-time homebuyers, to help teachers and law enforcement officers live close to their communities and not have to commute. And we make that commitment that we're going to continue to do that here, because we found that it's good business and because we found that it allows all of us to fulfill our own dreams. Because at the end of the day, the fact that we've grown in a short period of time to $700 million isn't just about a balance sheet, it's not just about a profit and loss statement, but I think it's because every person that works at this bank realizes that what they want most in life is to have an impact and to be able to know that they've left something behind every day. And that's what we're all about. I'm happy now or later in the meeting or at some other point in time to answer questions that you might have. Any of you that have picked up my card tonight will notice that at Howard Bank, our policy is that you put your cellphone on your card, and there's a reason for that. It's so that people can reach out to us, not during traditional banking hours, whatever those are anymore, I'm not sure, but that you can reach out to us. And if you've got a question, if you've got a complaint, if you've got kudos, whatever it is, and you need to talk to somebody, the fact that we have somebody there that you can talk to and somebody that's experienced and somebody that cares about your community because they're part of your community, you just reach out to us. So, thank you. I'm not going to take up a lot more of your time, but I do appreciate the opportunity. And I hope this is really just the beginning of our relationship with the community, and again extends a long history that MBRS had and that they weren't necessarily financially able to follow through on. So, it's a new day, but just like the bank has the best of the old and the new, I think that Howard Bank and Rising Sun is going to be the best of the old and the new as well. So, thank you.
Mrs. Scully, if a couple of people from the audience had questions, do you mind answering?
Not at all.
Okay. Mr. Mommy, if you would, go ahead.
I'm Tom Mommy, President of the Historical Preservation Commission here in town. May I say welcome?
Thank you.
It's delightful to have you here.
Thank you.
While you're putting things in shipshape over there, if we can help you with that legacy, if you come across some items that are historic in value but not of value to you, we would be happy to receive them and put them in our receipt.
All right. I think I know some of the things you might be referring to, and let me say, we value them very much. I actually was talking to your mayor today and said, "Have you ever been on our second floor?" Because if you like history, there's a lot of history there. But what I would say to you is, let's talk, because just because we value it doesn't mean that we should have all of it to ourselves, so maybe we can share some of that legacy. How would that be?
At your convenience.
Okay. I'll make sure you have my card before.
Okay.
No, I just wanted to say on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and myself, welcome. We are excited to have you in this community. I spoke a little bit earlier today when we met about Rising Sun, and we talked a little bit about the history of MBRS, we talked a little bit about the future, and I'm very excited to have you all join our community. And I'm also very excited that you have decided to retain the staff members that are there, because a lot of them, we have personal relationships with, especially the branch manager, who I absolutely adore. I'm excited to see her here as well, and I would be remiss if I didn't say Mrs. Scully as well. So, thank you. Thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for showing your face, because that definitely says something.
And you'll see me here a lot, so thank you very much.
The next thing on our agenda, actually, you know, I would be remiss if I forgot to call the roll, so Ms. Marshall, would you mind calling the roll, please?
Commissioner Althea.
Here.
Mr. Scully.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Commissioner Warnock.
Here.
Mayor, all are present.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Citizens' input is the next thing on the agenda. Chief, if I could have the roll called, please. Thank you. We have no speakers tonight. Would anyone like to speak this evening? Hearing none, we'll move forward into the mayor's report. My report's going to be brief this evening. I just have a few things to update the board and the town on. The first thing was, our Spooktacular was fantastic. We had over 1,200 people attend our Fall Spooktacular. It was a wonderful event for families of this community. We had tons of people come out. I want to say again, a special thank you to Desiree Davis, who was our event coordinator, and to all of the donors and volunteers. We had a core team of over 25 volunteers who manned different stations the entire day to make sure that the kids were well taken care of, and they had an enjoyable day. So, a big thank you to everyone who worked on that. I actually met with economic advisors from the state, county, and the federal, actually federal, Economic Development Specialists this past week. It was a great meeting. We talked a little bit about where the town wants to go in the short term, where the town wants to go in the long term. I am excited to see what comes of it. I'm excited to work with our Economic Development and Community Revitalization Board and Commissioner Warnock to move the town forward and to start working on the vacant buildings across the street. So, I'm very excited about that. I did attend the Rising Sun High School. I met up with the Rising Sun High School and attended a, today they did a hallway judging contest where different classes did, there are different hallways respectively, and the theme was "Made in the USA." And you had, you know, you had New Jersey, you had Washington DC, you had Brooklyn, New York, and it was very neat to be a part of that and to see the kids' creativity. We have a lot of creative kids in the Rising Sun area, and it was just really neat to be a part of that. I've invited the Board of Commissioners and town staff to attend the Rising Sun Football Homecoming Game. That'll be this Thursday evening, so I'm excited to see them there with me. Most of them have agreed to attend, so I'm excited about that as well. The next thing would be our Breast Cancer Awareness Proclamation. I did not read this at the last meeting, but this is it. You will find it in the hallway downstairs. It talks a little bit about the town itself getting involved in breast cancer, and then a little bit about the ribbons that you see outside, which are still up until the end of this month. So, if you have someone that has been affected by cancer, stop by and sign those ribbons and read the messages of hope, because if you haven't, I think you will definitely get something by reading some of those messages. And the last thing is that my French student went back to France. He was here at the last meeting, so I wanted to say hello to Victor in quarantine. He became my adopted son, so I actually had two of them. I took them around Rising Sun and around Rising Sun High School. They spent a day there, and I miss them very much, but they successfully got back to Paris and enjoyed their time here, so much that the first thing they asked their parents was when they could come back. So, I'm excited to hopefully have them come back this summer. So, with that being said, I'm going to move into staff reports. Chief Peterson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners.
Good evening.
During the period of October 15th through the 28th, we responded to approximately 220 calls for service. There were no notable trends. However, during that time period, we did receive numerous calls from concerned citizens who had received telephone calls from, I believe it was an 867 area code. The callers would advise whoever answered that they won a contest and attempt to get them to send money to the caller in return for winning a foreign lottery, winning five different prizes, and letting them know they've been specially selected for a prize. The area code, which I traced back, came back to the Northern Canadian Territories, but the callers would always want you to send money wired to Jamaica. Everything I just said to you should send up a red flag. Anytime someone calls you, won from a foreign country, saying you've won something. So, with that being said, please pay attention. I haven't figured out, and we haven't found any data that explains why and how mostly seniors are the ones receiving the phone calls. I do understand that they may be monitoring what is placed in local newspapers or on Facebook, because some of the trends are current with the events that are going on in our region. However, we haven't been able to isolate why and how they pick the seniors. Moving on to the next topic, during that period of time, the Rising Sun Police Department sponsored a drug awareness display booth at the Rising Sun Health Fair. I spent approximately seven hours at the health fair. I believe it was a great success. Many people that stopped by the booth was not aware of what some of the drugs that are currently on the streets of Rising Sun look like. Many were amazed that the small amount of heroin that's packaged in a package that is being sold and the potency. We also assisted with the mayor's Spooktacular. My officers tell me that was a great success. They enjoy being out, meeting the public. In addition, currently, yesterday, the first day of Commissioner Scully's Youth Mental Health First Aid Course began. Approximately 20-some people attended, and I myself am sitting in on the class, and I've learned quite a bit, quite a bit about, you know, the youth and what we can do for them, and I've also learned quite a bit about myself, because some of the issues that they face, we as adults still face, and anxiety is one of them. And lastly, we attended, I attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting for the Rising Sun area, and that, to me, is a great event, because it puts those people in the business community together with law enforcement, and together we can work well with solving crime in the businesses around town. And that is my report, unless there's any other questions.
I have one thing.
Yes, sir.
I got a call from Publishers Clearinghouse telling me that I had won a Mercedes-Benz. The only problem with the call is, I got it on the town phone number, my town phone. I don't put my town phone number on contests that I enter. So, that was the first, one of the things that...
I promise, it wasn't me.
Also, in case these same people call you and tell you you've won something from Publishers Clearinghouse, and they call you, Publishers Clearinghouse does not notify winners by telephone, so...
That is true.
I didn't give them a chance.
They would show up at your door with a Mercedes.
Yeah, I didn't give them a chance to tell me what they wanted me to do.
Yeah. The easiest way to handle those situations, just hang up. If you need any further information about that, the Federal Trade Commission has a great website that gives you a lot of tips to deal with those issues. But, you know, Publishers Clearinghouse, you're absolutely right. They would send you something in the mail or show up, and if you do get that Mercedes, can you leave me the keys?
I told you, go ahead and send it to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Town Administrator, do you have a report this evening?
I just have a couple of things that I'll bring up as a placeholder for the respective Commissioners that maybe want to highlight on them, is Commissioner Walker and myself, we attended a meeting with MDE this past Friday. I think it's important maybe to say a little bit about it, because the history and the past has been for people to make maybe some wild accusations about what is actually going on, and I think Commissioner Walker and I went there with the clear understanding that everything was fine, and we were on the same wavefront as MDE, and we left that meeting with that same reassurance also, too. Also, to let the residents know, we're in the process of closing on our banned anticipation notes with PNC Bank, that is, the money that's used to pay for the wastewater treatment plant. USDA is going to be buying out the first $9 million of the original $13 million loan, which is very significant, because it will actually help the town's cash flow, because now we will begin to pay that $9 million off over a 40-year amortization schedule as opposed to paying the $9 million on a two-and-a-half, three-year bridge loan, which can, you know, create cash flow issues. And you've heard me refer to the cash flow issues in the past, that despite all that, those financial obligations, we've still been able to keep our bottom line consistent. And then, I'm sure that Commissioner Arthur Reith will bring up the handicap parking space. Just a reminder to residents, because we started getting questions about this, the town did initiate towards the end of last year, a program to take care of people in our community that require handicap parking, and there's a gap in providing for people that have needs such as handicap parking when it comes to the public street in front of your home or in your development. There are no provisions on the state or federal level for requiring that, but yet we all know we have neighbors and all that have needs for handicap parking. So, the town, similar to other communities, created a handicap parking process, application process, and it's not something that's distributed, you know, willy-nilly, and it, you know, it has to be a real need to get that handicap parking. So, we installed one recently down in the Valley View Development that caught the attention of some residents, but it is a program that's been in place now for maybe about nine months, and we had our first applicant come along, so I just wanted to put that in its proper context of where it came from. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Town Administrator. Mrs. Wagner, do you have the financials this evening? Thank you.
As you will notice, your book is a little bit thicker than normal, and I'm not going to go through three months of financial statements. I think we would all be bored to tears if I did that. But what I did do, because we found out some things after the audit, and we were busy with the audit, that we just felt we were going to reinstate July and August, and I'm not even sure if you ever got to see August, it's been a little blur lately. So, you want to go to the very final one, which is September. And as you can see, and I'll give, have it a minute to catch up.
We're in the government, correct?
Mm-hmm. For September.
Okay. Is it blue?
Your blue tab?
Yes, the blue tab. And you're going to go to page three, and you will see that our cash flow has increased, and that is because we collected part of the real estate taxes for this year, and that's slightly over half a million dollars. You will see that the tax service receivable is for $405,429.21. So, we're going to see a substantial amount more money come in for real estate taxes. The due-to the proprietary is $319,545.31, and the unrestricted fund balance is $880,472. If you go to the next page, you will see the revenue right now is slightly a million dollars, but we've only spent $407,730.78. And the issue with this is, we received most of our real estate tax money at the beginning of the year, and then that's going to need to carry us through that $633,776.91 of positive unrestricted funds will need to carry us through several months before we get some more real estate taxes. Any questions with the income and the expenditures? We will go to the very last page, and if you're interested, you can look at your various different departments, like the police, you have budget to actual, and you will see it's very close. All the departments so far, I believe, most of them, except for maybe debt services, looks like they're pretty well break even with expenditures of what we were planning on budgeting. But let's go to page eight, and we're going to look at the totals. I was just making sure you're there, Calvin. You will see that we are positive of budget to actual of revenue of $43,496.64, and we have underspent by $16,865.7. So, we are doing positive $44,111.70 to budget. So, right now, we are staying within the budget with our expenditures. Any questions with regard to that? Okay. Let's go right to the proprietary fund. And as I've explained to you before, this is more, even though it has the names of fund accounting, it runs and functions more under the accounting principles of like a business. So, you will see that we have about $311,284.38 in our bank accounts, and we have $1,573,231.97 in the MLGIP, which is the money in PNC in the government pool. The water and the sewer owe each other money. Basically, this is part of the cash flow that we were talking with Calvin, that we've put out and paid for sewer expenses, and it just kind of created a hiccup for us. And the due-to, due-to back and forth between the water and sewer is $417,062.64. We have net assets of $18 million... We have net assets of $18,566,665.30. And then you will see the next line is the due-to-do back between the government of We have liabilities of $14,645,171.48, which $13,100,000 of that is the sewer loan. We have unrestricted assets of $2,315,654.98. So our total assets are $21 million. If you go to page four, you will see that the water and sewer has brought in about $300,000, and we have spent $186,000 to the positive, $114,763.59. And then you have your connection and interest income down there to make it $115,687.91. Any questions with regard to the income and expenditures? We go to the very last page. You will see we are slightly under in the revenue by $5,348.70. And I have a feeling you'll see this correction come when, we're going to have a rate increase at some time, correct, Calvin?
Yes.
Yeah, and it, because we prorate the projected income over 12 months evenly, we kind of are under a little bit for the first couple of months, and then when we have the rate increase, it will all even out. We have also spent $107,756.61 under budget, and I think this is really good. We've been trying to keep on with our expenditures. So to the budget, we are positive $102,593.69. And hopefully, we'll just keep holding on to that. Any questions? That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner.
You have a good evening.
You too.
Mayor Marion?
Yes?
There's one thing that, from a conversation that Commissioner, Ms. Wagner and I had the other day, sometimes you might look at some of these, and you always wonder from month to month, why the different accounts owe money to each other. And one of the reasons why you see that reoccurring is, we have three deposit accounts that we put on our money, and we have, for the sewer fund, the water fund, and the general fund. It's very easy for, most of the time, people, when people cash a check, it could be, when people give us cash money, it's easy enough to put that cash money on the deposit slip that the cash was collected for. But most people pay us in checks. And there isn't a whole lot of stuff that we receive from residents that's written on a check for the general fund. A lot of our money comes from the automatic deposit that the county makes, because they collect trash, they collect our taxes. However, if somebody comes in to pay their sewer and water bill, they are writing one check for both their sewer and water. And so when our staff goes to make up that deposit slip, they can't like tear the check in half and put one on the sewer and one on the water. So we pick one account to make that deposit into, and that is typically the water account. So that's why you will often see from month to month, the water fund owing money to the sewer fund, because that transaction or that reconciliation might not have happened. So I just, for the layperson, understand why every month you see that showing up all the time, that's one of the reasons why.
Thank you. Moving forward into our Historical Preservation Commission report.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, we finished up our three activities successfully, so we batted a thousand. We are in the midst of discussing the month of December, although I am sad to report that we will not be in the Cecil County Christmas Parade this year. Calvin, I think you have a little presentation on the screens up here. This is of the activity at the Civil War reunion, reenactment.
Yes, some of it is just some of the pictures that were taken of the event. I don't have quite as many as Dea Stewart probably has in totality, but...
What you're looking at there was a Saturday night dance for the reenactors and the public. And that's a new caller that we hired this year. The guy's a real professional, drove up here from Virginia, and he had him out on the dance floor doing it all.
And so the last one that I have...
What building is it in?
The Pavilion.
Oh, it's in the Pavilion.
I'm sorry, we had this all preloaded, but some reason it like reset itself when I went downstairs.
Okay, this is a video that was put on by a woman who was there that I didn't know. This was back in 2013. She goes around the reenactments and videos them and puts it on film, and it's really kind of, some of it is here and some of it is elsewhere. That's here. Yeah? Put 2014 in there.
Thank you. Any old business tonight? Any new business tonight? Hearing none, we'll move forward into Commissioner's comments. Commissioner Althanreth.
A few things to report on, Mr. Mayor, since our last, our last time together. The Public Works guys have been pretty busy trying to get some work in here before, we never know when the cold weather's going to hit. So they got one fire hydrant replaced down on Main Street across from Buck's Restaurant. It took a little time because it turned out to be deeper in the ground than they thought it was, so they had to order a new one. They did also do the handicap parking space down in Valley View, and this was something that Commissioner Walker, when he was on Planning and Zoning with us last year, brought to us in one of his projects that came to fruition. We have residents who do not have the availability of off-street parking at their home, and they do require handicap space to, for access close to their homes and to get in and out of their vehicles. And a lot of our parking in this town was not planned with that in mind for the future. So it has caused a little bit of friction because it does take up a little more space. So that being said, you know, to take care of ourselves as we get older, not just those who are old, you know, we're going to be that way one day ourselves. And to be ADA compliant, we need to provide that type of parking for our residents where they don't have any other choice. So I hope everybody will understand that, that we're not taking away from somebody else to give more to somebody, we're just trying to make life a little easier for everybody as we get to that point to where we need the extra, the extra help. There is an application process that they have to go through, it's just like what Calvin said, it's not just you come in, say you want it, you get it. You have to show proof of a need, and that you've gone through all the Department of Motor Vehicles regulations to get your initial handicap parking for when you go out to public parking spaces, and then follow the protocol that we put in place through planning and zoning to take care of that. So it was good to see that come to fruition, and thank you, Commissioner Walker, for spearheading Another thing, from our last meeting, Jane put a article in the paper about me asking residents to contact me if they had some issues, and Jane, it worked pretty well. Thank you very much. I got, not being sarcastic or anything, it worked real well. I got quite a few emails from residents that normally we don't hear from or know of, and they were very polite, they weren't, you know, mean or anything. And Calvin and I met that following Friday, and I haven't gotten any more since then, but, you know, please feel free to still send them to me. So we met for a couple of hours and talked about what we could do going forward, and then we got together, that was on a Friday, and then we got together that Tuesday morning and toured some of these areas, and looked at, you know, what we could do, what would be town responsibility, what would be homeowner responsibility, what would be homeowners' association responsibility in some of the community. So we looked at that stuff and started seeing more things as we looked at just these five emails. One of the things we talked about that I'll be bringing forward to the board, hopefully by the next meeting, is we were talking about getting KCI, our guy who helped us with the Maple Heights engineering, to, throughout this winter, do an evaluation of streets and sidewalks in town, because we've got a lot of stuff that we don't want to just go in, and new concrete here, and some blacktop here, and a little bit here, a little bit there, when actually, we should do it more consistently. So that's one of the things that I'm going to hopefully have a price in a couple of weeks, that when we come to the next meeting, we can vote on having KCI go out, look the town over, and rate what needs to be done, what we can do through the cold weather that may be concrete, or just, you know, clearing out some area, trimming some branches or something. One development, we've got streetlights that the trees were planted right next to them, and they're growing right up around the streetlights, and they're pretty much worthless to have. So hopefully, we'll have that price in the next couple of weeks from KCI, and they can bring that forward. We can get an assessment over the winter, see what we need to do for the upcoming budget in 2015, what we can get in there and get done, and just have more handle on who's responsible for what. As you see, we're still operating under budget. The last job that Cirillo Brothers did for us come in significantly under budget, which was good, and will allow us a little flexibility to move forward with more street sidewalk repair. And another thing we found when we were out looking around is, some of our streetlights in the community need to be replaced. Some of the glass is so yellowed, it really doesn't provide any light. One across the street looks brand new, the one over here is just, you know, ready to fall down, old plastic poles, and it just makes some of the communities look really bad. We also looked around at some streets were very narrow, and people were going off the road, some stone needs to be poured in there, and what we can do ourselves to take care of that. I'll be getting back to these people that emailed me, and like I said, Jane, thanks, that really helped out. It was interesting to hear from people we normally don't hear from. And we're going to probably do another tour of some areas and see what needs to be, what we can do. But when you start going around this whole town, it's a bigger little town than what you think it is, when you start covering every street, sidewalk. So it really helps to know, when somebody says, "I've got a sidewalk problem on such and such street," to know an address, because I can go over and look at that street, and the whole sidewalk from one end to the other quarter mile needs replaced, and I don't know who's talking about what. So that's kind of where we are on there. Calvin, I don't know if I missed anything else that Ron and the guys were doing, but on Planning and Zoning, our next meeting is November 17th, and we're still looking for members for that. Anybody, like I said many times before, submit us a letter with your information, so when we do meet, we can get an interview set up with you and move forward on that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Althanreth. It was funny to try to grab Commissioner Althanreth.
One more thing, one more thing. Wanted to say, is the same, not having any little kids, I don't hit some of the events we have in town, but we made it to the Fall Festival Spooktacular last week, and it was great to see that event go the way it did. It was a great idea you had to go on forward, and a better idea to put Desiree in charge of it like you did. So it was a lot of fun. We had more people than we could actually, than we could actually had. It was a good thing we had plenty of police officers there, because there was a lot of little kids there, and God forbid, anything would have happened to any of them. We had children just taking two or three steps away and be looking for mommy or something. So that was a great event we had going on. We had one of the local county guys who was running for office come by and said he'd been to other parts of the community, and no wonder, it was empty, everybody was in Rising Sun. So, once again, Mr. Mayor, great idea that you put forward as Commissioner of Parks and Recreation. You've got something great going on that I see just building and building and building, and it really stood out. I got a lot of comments from people outside of town who heard about it and are going to probably steal your idea.
Well, I wanted to say, it was, it was great to hear from Commissioner Althanreth that members of the community were approaching him about streets and sidewalks issues. I had mentioned to him about an email that I'd sent him, and he said, "My email mailbox is clogged with all these people trying to get ahold of me with streets and sidewalks issues." So it was good to see people contact him, so continue to do that. Moving forward, Commissioner Scully.
I first wanted to start out with just acknowledging Officer Vanaske and the efforts that he put forth in apprehending a suspect in homicide, and all the officers that participated in Spooktacular to make that safe and a great event to have that many people there. And even reading that pumpkin thefts come to their attention and they, they run out, there's no, there's no issue that's too small that they don't respond to. I am disappointed that I wasn't able to attend the youth mental health first aid. Yesterday was the first day of a two-day session. However, Ann April and Carrie both were very excited from Steps Recovery Resources, who gave us the opportunity to host this program, and they were tremendously excited about how well it went. And I will be attending their November session, which will be hosted at Cecil County Health Department, but we're also looking for a Saturday because the response has been so great that some people want to attend on a Saturday, so it may be coming back to Town Hall again to be able to host a different day, but we already have filling up for a November session. So again, I just want to thank the two of them for bringing us the opportunity, and just really happy that it's going so well. So everybody will finish their certification tomorrow after their five-day session. So that is what I have to report, and if anybody has any questions.
Commissioner Scully, can I just point out, the homicide wasn't in Rising Sun, it was in, it was at least 10 miles away.
Right. Yes.
Must be an Amber Alert again.
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that. It was not in Rising Sun, he participated in the apprehension of a suspect from another area.
Before we, that rumor's starting within town. Thank you, Commissioner Scully, and thank you for working hard on our Public Safety Department and for being involved with this youth mental aid, first aid. I've heard a lot of people say how they've definitely learned a lot of things, like the chief spoke, that they necessarily did not know about mental health and about helping our young people. So that's great, thank you. Commissioner Walker?
The Town Administrator and I attended the monthly sewer construction meeting, first Monday of the month. That's a meeting between the, those of us from the town, the engineer for the sewer project, and the contractor for the project. These meetings are going very well, and when a problem seems to be approaching, they all work together to get it solved and keep the project moving along. Town Administrator also mentioned the meeting in Baltimore with MDE on Friday. That meeting was arranged by Delegate Rudolph. I'm sure all of you know that the town has been in noncompliance with our discharge from the sewer plant. This noncompliance is resulting in fines to the town. Those fines total now up to almost $40,000. We have not had to pay those fines. MDE wanted to meet with us this past Friday about those fines. We worked out an agreement with MDE, once we explained to them the progress we're making on our new sewer plant, that those fines have been...
we're making on our new sewer plant, that those fines have been... I don't want to say they've been excused, they haven't. They've been, our payment of them has been delayed until the completion of the sewer project, and if it's completed in, on time, we may not have to pay those fines. So the meeting was productive. Other than, I, I want to also say to the Commissioner of Streets and Sidewalks that I'm going to start fighting with you over money, because we still have a water line to build.
There we go. That'll add entertainment to the meeting.
Did you hear that, chief?
I did.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner Walker. I'm not refereeing that fight. Commissioner Warnock.
Yeah, so we've had a, a few things, I guess, over the past couple of weeks. The chamber meeting, we had a presentation, I guess, two meetings ago on some of our plans for economic redevelopment and community revitalization. The last meeting, as the police chief alluded to, we, we were there, and there was actually a pretty good presentation there. We gave a quick update, but I think the first five minutes of the meeting, we were too distracted with the Orioles getting beat in the fourth game of the, against Royal, against Kansas City. So on the, last week, there was an economic development meeting, and afterwards, there was a tour of the town. So the mayor and I took the local and state and federal officials around the Main Street area, what we kind of consider the historic downtown area, and we discussed everything from parking to building conditions and possible economic redevelopment and things like that, some of the funding mechanisms and such. And I, I feel pretty good about some of those, about that meeting, and hopefully, we make some good progress out of that over the next year. I don't want to go too much into that without knowing all the, what that progress may be. But there's also, we've, I've had some meetings with the county on a possible trail, our trail network that we're working on building and possibly getting a portion of our rails, the trails going within town limits, or at least immediately adjacent to it, that would connect possibly the Veterans Park to the Richardson Park over off of Main Street. And so we're working with, Delmarva's interested in putting in power lines in that right away. So they're, they need a utility easement down through there, and that would allow us to get a part of a trail built that would start to be able to connect things together. The dog park, I'm going to bring up something, I guess, that occurred earlier today at the dog park. We had a, I want to remind people that there's a, first of all, within the rules of the dog park, there's a rule about aggressive dogs. Additionally, there's both town and county, and I believe even state law regarding aggressive dogs. And just to kind of read out some of the parts about the county code, it's one, paragraph 142-9, impoundment and redemption of dangerous dogs. Basically, dogs that inflict injury on human beings without being provocative on public or private property, or killer inflicts severe injury on domestic animal with provocation while off the owner's property. Additionally, violations shall include up to a fine of twenty-five hundred dollars. There's also, if you don't have a license, the occurrences, starting with the first occurrence, it's fifty dollars, second is seventy-five, third occurrence is a hundred per animal, and not having a license tag on the collar is thirty-five dollars per animal. Additionally, the state requirement for dangerous dogs includes bites a person when not in its owner's real property kills or inflicts severe injury on a domestic animal or attacks without provocation. And determination of potentially dangerous dog, basically the same thing, has inflicted a bite on a person on a public or private real property, when not on its owner's real property, has killed or inflicted severe injury on domestic animal, and has attacked without provocation. I guess the reason I'm going into all of this is, I, I want to remind animal or dog owners that when using the dog park, if you have an aggressive dog, you can be held liable for that dog. There was a, I guess, a pit bull that had attacked a small dog tonight, and we don't have all the details on it yet, but I mean, we're going to be investigating that, and there may be some consequences that can come out of that. So I, I would strongly encourage people to think about bringing a dog that has aggressive tendencies to the dog park. They are prohibited, so. And the, in the future, I guess, we have an economic redevelopment meeting on November 20th. Were you, I'm not sure if you were, so the mayor and I are attending, I'm not sure if anybody else, I, I guess I'll send it out and talk to Calvin, figure out if anybody else is going to that one. But that one's a, a good meeting, apparently, for a lot of the agencies that we'll be, you know, be able to work with next year. Networking and getting with agencies that hopefully can help us, you know, with a combination of training and, and resources and possibly even some funding to get some of our economic redevelopment moving along. So with that, that's everything. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Warnock. The other thing I would like to add, I guess, Parks and Recreation-wise, is I was approached by a couple of people asking about the trail system at Veterans Community Park. Commissioner Warnock has not forgotten about that, he is waiting for a lot of the foliage to die out so that it'll be easier to clear, if you want to go in a little bit about that. That's basically what we're trying to wait on.
Yeah, I apologize. We started on some of that, but we basically got into brush that was so thick that it was difficult to proceed. And one of the things is, before we start disturbing all the foliage at the park, I want to be able to have like kind of a clear line of sight. I don't want to just start blazing trails through everywhere, get up through and realize we're into swamp land and we have to kind of proceed back. We've now, you know, damaged wetlands and things, so we were trying to be cautious about proceeding with the trail system before we, we move forward on certain sections, because we are starting to get into areas that, that could be wetlands areas. So we're trying to be thoughtful, and also, it's, it's honestly kind of hard to get through the sticker bushes when they're fully in, yeah, it was...
In vroom.
Yeah. Lot of blood donations to the park to testify to that.
I also wanted to say, on a, on a personal note, a big thank you to Commissioner Warnock. On his personal time, he ended up driving me to New York over this past weekend, so I could say a proper goodbye to my exchange student. I spoke a little bit about that, but unfortunately, they had set it up so that these kids would go to New York for two days, and you had to say goodbye in a parking lot on Friday. And I was a little upset about it, and I called Commissioner Warnock, and I said, "Hey, is there any way I can con you into driving to New York?" And somehow, I conned him into it. So I was able to surprise my exchange student at a park in New York City, had no idea I was coming, and walked up to him, and Commissioner Warnock would attest that he broke apart in tears and was all happy and stuff, so it was great. So I wanted to say a special thank you to you for doing that for me personally. So with that, any other business to come before the board this evening? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.